Session called over, Pledge of Allegiance, moment of silence, public service announcements. Then at 6:35, we have a public hearing regarding an amended licensure for gas tanks at One New Boston Road. Then we have the town administrator update, biweekly memo, gateway sign, department reports from Water and Sewer and DPW, consideration in action on an application for a Hawker and Pedlar license, consideration possible actions on a one-day liquor license for greater good at the town bonfire, consideration possible action on a one-day liquor license for altruist brewing for the town bonfire, consideration and possible action for the board to authorize the chair to execute the contract with tie and bond for engineering service from Route 20 sewer replacement, consideration possible action to accept the donation for benches near the Veterans Honor Room Monument, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute a contract with tie and bond regarding the 469A Main Street Trail and Bridge project in the amount of 233,500. Consideration and possible action, execute a contract with tie and bond for the Grand Trunk Trail on property number 1 to 9 in the amount of 67,700. Possible action on the appointment of Jane, is that Jane Fowler?
Jane.
Yeah. Fowler, the Servage Disabilities Commission, old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, Citizens Forum, and adjournment. With that, would everybody please hand for the Pledge of Allegiance? My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Now, I would just like to take a moment of silence, really for the events unfolding in Palestine and Israel, and just our prayers to all the innocents in that event. All right, thank you. Public service announcements, Mary Lou.
Nothing.
Mr. Chase.
I have nothing, thank you.
And I have nothing. All right, we are a couple of minutes advanced to the hearing. Robyn, you just want to start with your biweekly memo?
Yeah, it's very short this week. Basically, I think the most important thing is we are following up on the whole Route 20 situation. We have expressed, they have given us the schedule, sort of a schedule, and we're hoping it's followed. We do see an end in sight. We have asked them specifically to limit the closure down to one lane during the hours of like 7 to 9, and then 2:30 to 6:00 in the afternoon. They said they would make every effort to try to comply with limited closures as best as possible. We emphasized again how horrible this was, and people sitting in traffic frankly for an hour and a half in the morning on their way to work is not acceptable. Opioid updates, our opioid staff team continues to work. We have a logo and an SOS, Sturbage Opioid Group design. I will have a copy of a, I think in one of your last packets, I had a sample three-page pamphlet opened up. We're upgrading, we're updating all the informational. We pretty much are taking a couple of tracks on this. We're taking an educational and prevention track, and then we're taking a recovery and resource track. Not that we would provide the recovery programs, but access to them and information leading people to that. But a large component on education and prevention, particularly with looking at the opioids for parents who are sort of unsuspecting because there's not a traditional image of drug use when it comes to opioids. It's got a very different, broader population that leads to a more traditional, if you will, drug use. So educating parents as well. We did have a brief meeting with Dish Antenna about the antenna they are looking to put on top of the Fisk Hill Water Tower. They have shown us some preliminary designs, what it's going to look like and whatnot. They do understand that while they are on the track to get this to planning sometime in December, they need to show it to the board first. So they will be, we put them on the agenda for November 20th. So I want to give you all enough advance notice, and I'll let other Marys know so that they can be here, because I know everybody's going to want to participate in that. So they're very willing to work on it. The design has a lot of shielding and covering and whatnot. They're prepared to also discuss, we talked to them about the concerns about health risks. We talked to them about the concerns about visual look and aesthetics, safety with weather, all of those things. And so we asked them to be sure that they are prepared to answer any of those questions for us before it even moves forward to planning, understanding that planning may do some design changes.
Sure. We also should probably be looking for a policy for this type of thing, just how to analyze it in repeat manner going forward, because I suspect things like this will be...
Yeah, because we do have the other lease for T-Mobile Sprint that we have to put out to bid, and, I mean, they've already got equipment up there, but, so we'll continue to keep equipment up there, but we do need to put out a lease. So I think that the question on the policy really has to be, does the board want to put something in there that before they even go to planning, the board needs to have a preliminary review of the project? And, you know, I think that's what sort of needs to be thought about, containing, what is the board's latitude in that, and legal latitude?
Well, because we're entering into a contract for, that we will get, we're giving them our space, and they're paying us, so that comes under our purview. So I guess, I guess mostly what I want to do is just, I don't know what you guys think, is to, I just want to have like a rubric to do with this every single time when someone comes to town, because otherwise it's not, and maybe it has to be ad hoc, maybe it won't come up that much, I don't know, but, I don't know.
It probably won't, but it should have a process and a protocol so that one group who wants to do it gets treated the same, or when we put it out to bid and don't know who might want, let's say, I mean, obviously, T-Mobile Sprint will probably rebid their own equipment, as opposed to someone paying to take it down and put new up. But if someone wants to add to that or whatever else, I do think that just a generic policy makes it where we're not treating any, this way we're never treating anybody differently.
Sure.
One project over another, one neighborhood over another.
And, or maybe you'll conclude that it is ad hoc, I don't know.
Yeah, maybe. But it's nice to at least take a look at that, so. Okay, and that is it from me on the update. The only other thing in your packet that's on the update, and we'll talk about the gateway sign after, but very quickly, I just wanted to let you know the recreation committee did finally find a market manager, Elizabeth Adams. It's not officially a board-appointed position, but we just wanted to let you know recreation is supported, it's a stipend position for $2,500. And he was able to run the market without it this year, but it was a heavy lift. So in January, when they start registering and getting going, this person is up and running and ready to roll.
Great.
And I do want to thank Annie for running a very good farmer's market, and all the volunteers who continued to stick with it. There was a little bit of upheaval early in the year, and it all ended up working out. And I went by myself last Sunday, and just a great, great market. It really is a beautiful farmer's market.
Yeah, definitely, yes. Okay, I think we can call the public hearing now. I always forget if I have to call a vote on a public hearing.
No, not to open it, the call, reading the call is the opening. We had this discussion last time.
Yeah, exactly.
I thought you did have to open it.
Yeah, yeah, all right.
The call is the opening.
Mary is not here, so I'll read it.
You don't have a brain?
I don't.
One second.
Want me to read it to you?
Yeah, if you have it.
Yeah, I got it.
Thanks.
The Town of Sturbridge brought a selectmen in accordance with MGLCH 148, Section 13, hereby give notice that a public hearing will be held on Monday, October 16th, 2023, at 6:35 PM for the application of the Town of Sturbridge for an amended license for gas tanks with flammable materials located at One New Boston Road Extension, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566. A public hearing will take place at the Town Hall, Second Floor Veterans Memorial Hall located at 308 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566, dated October 5th, 2023.
All right. So my first question is, is ASD, is that, is that above ground? Is that A stand for above ground in ASD?
It's a, it's an above-ground storage tank.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, that was my first. So what's going on, Heather?
So, as I think you have been informed, unfortunately, our diesel tank, after multiple, well, over the past year, we've had multiple times we've had it tested and improvements made on it, has shown that it has failed. The, it's a double-walled tank, the inner tank has failed and allowed diesel to leak into the outer, into interstitial space. That tank has now been emptied, and we are proceeding with the cleanup requirements and testing requirements and what we're going to proceed forward. But in the meantime, we've had to do, find provisions to keep diesel on-site so that we can keep the large trucks and the buses and ambulance running. So we have rented a above-ground, 7,000-gallon storage tank that is sitting right next to the pump, if you're looking where it is. So it's really right in the same exact adjacent area, and been able to connect that to our dispensing unit via new pump pumping out of the tank and into the dispenser. But in accordance with the requirements, we have to have a public hearing to let the public know what we're doing, but that's the basic gist of what we're doing. We are proceeding with the requirements through SDP and our LSP on-site for the site cleanup, licensed site professional, LSP, so.
Questions from the board?
Just, is this just a temporary tank, and you're going to, we're going to drop one in the ground once the old ones pulled out?
So, at this time, yeah, the plan is, that is a temporary tank. The definition of temporary is probably a little bit loose right now.
Right.
It depends on how temporary, but it is something that is only there as a temporary measure. What we will be exploring in the future is likely an above-ground storage tank so that we don't have to worry about this in the future. What was already, we were, when we've been talking in concept of what a new DPW would look like, we were actually talking about above-ground storage tanks for both our diesel and our gas. It's a lot easier to monitor and not have to worry about that subsurface contamination in the future.
Where would they be located?
Well, they'd still be on the DPW site at some point. We don't really have an exact location yet because we're still working on that site plan and concept for what a new DPW possibly would look like. And so we were very preliminary in that road, but I think both Robyn Chavez and myself had already kind of come to that conclusion that below-ground isn't really the way to go, that above-ground is really the way to go in the future. So we have some, you know, that has kind of been accelerated at this timeframe, but even just moving the tanks and putting new tanks in is, we're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars just even for the tank instructor. So we need to do some of that planning, which we had started, because we had had ARPA money to look at some of the subsurface concerns from previous, from this, this potential spill, I don't really, I use that term, not liking to use that term because it was really contained in the interstitial space.
Breach, yeah.
Right, the breach of the inner tank.
Yeah.
So now that's kind of accelerated, where we have to look at those, where we need to worry about other subsurface existing contamination if we have to do anything before we site things. You know, the tricky part is we're very limited in space that we're, you know, where we already have cleared. So anything new to keep the operation still moving, we have to be very careful about where we site things with all the buses and all the large equipment that we have moving around down there. It looks like we have a lot of space when there's nobody down there, but when that site is, you know, 1:30 in the afternoon, it's like crazy mad town down there. So even just putting the tank where we used to run buses through is impacting the traffic flow. So we have to be very careful with what we do. But right now, we're just hoping to get through winter and keep working with the licensed site professionals to figure out from the, from what we need to do for that part first before we get in any long-term fighting.
Good luck.
We will be going to FinCom for this. This is not something we have normally budgeted, unforeseeable, so we're getting ready to go to FinCom in a couple of weeks.
Yes, preliminarily.
What's the cost?
Oh, so I think, I looked at that spreadsheet so quickly. So we're renting the tank from United Rentals. It's like $10,000 right now with the licensed site professional, there's some more work that they need to do. The rental, the monthly rental, I think, was somewhere in the range of 2,000 to 2,500 a week, a month. So was it unreasonable, considering the cost of the long-term tank and then the cleanup? So really, we're trying to get through this year financially and have something going forward, looking with some different engineering options. But we're very concerned, we're not going to put them, we can't put them back right where they were if they go above ground, we need space. So it's going to take some, some thinking of how can we site these properly and still be able to use our space and have all our storage?
We did talk to Maya about whether or not it was covered. We have a large deductible anyway on it, but...
Yeah, $10,000.
$10,000 deductible anyway, but they don't cover, they consider the age of the tank the cause, and therefore it wasn't some type of an accident.
Yeah, we're looking at this tank was probably in the range of almost 25 years old, so.
What was going to happen?
What's the, so the temporary measure is about 8,000 gallons, but is the, what are the tanks in the ground?
The diesel tank was 10,000, and the gas tank is 8,000.
Any other questions from the board?
No.
Okay, do, does anybody in the public want to speak on this? I think so. All right, hearing done, do we have a motion?
Yes.
With close of public hearing.
Close of public hearing.
First move to close, I moved to close the public hearing. All those in favor? And then, do we have a motion on the merits?
I'll make a motion to approve that, is it the temporary tank?
Yeah. I think it's to amend the license.
To amend the license.
Yeah.
For gas tanks with flammable materials located at One New Boston Road Extension, Sturbridge, Mass.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? No, I have it. Heather, you can just stay there.
Well, I think you can go and do the sign guy.
Oh, sure, if you want. I was just going to, I was going to let you in shape.
Don't tell the sign guy, the true identity. Come on up. So while Joe is coming up, let me, I don't need to remind you all that one of the things you've charged me with was creating some type or having some type of a very notable gateway sign for the town. We sought funding from ARPA, which the board approved of, I believe, $35,000, and there's betterment money as well, and I think we've got an additional sort of pot of money for decorations and plantings and whatever around this sign. Just a couple of things, you'll notice in the packet, there are two pricings. One says temporary, one says permanent. The little challenge we have is that we're putting this at 131 and 20. That is going to be in 26 redesigned by the state. So we were originally looking at a permanent stone base, and, which is expensive, and if we were going to have to pull it all out in 26, it seemed like we really couldn't justify the expense of the stone base to pull it out and then have to rebuild the whole thing. So we had Joe, who has worked for our town before, you may know he's the Wayfarer, you did the Wayfarer signs, right, Joe? You did the Wayfarer signs, you did.
Yes.
And so we had Joe also design, he calls it a temporary, I sort of call it a movable, not so much temporary. So it has a faux stone base, it's painted, and that way, when we have to take it down for construction, we can remove it and we can put that same one back. That does have the breakaways, it complies with DOT. So you see two pricing options in there. I just want to be clear, the temporary doesn't mean it's just a first round. It's temporary in the sense of movable. So with that being said, Joe has put up for you what we have so far, what he's come up with for us. Jean Bouban and I have been working, you should have a letter in your packet from Jean.
Yes.
She's very supportive of this project. Some people in the public might have seen Jean, Joe, myself, and the police chief all loitering on the 131 and 20 grassy area. The chief and Jean actually went to, onto Route 20, and you got to do that with the police car, right, and have the lights all flashing, and got out, took pictures of how we anticipate this to look from a distance with some mockups. So, Joe, I don't know if you want to share a little bit with us, or?
Question? Where? Well, I'm certified with the state through combines, and the, the idea behind the sign, I think, we've got something really unique. Interesting story, this design came into being, but the idea is to make this thing last 50 to 100 years, so all the materials and, idea. Here we go.
The picture in the packet with the plywood, that was the day we were out there milling around on the thing, that gives you a sense of the view, size and the scale of it. So that was to scale, and then we measured out exactly the angle that we liked. It will be predominantly visible coming, heading west on 20, since the vast majority of our cars and traffic comes from the highways, from 90 and 84. The back will be like a flat black.
Yep.
And then we'll, this is where the extra money for the plantings, we can do behind it to decorate a little bit behind it.
Who, questions from the board?
I think it looks really good, I like it.
This is the first edition, we've made some edits.
Oh, okay.
More detail, but that's not done yet. I mean, it's done, but I don't have it.
He's still tweaking it a little bit. You'll notice it has the New England crossroads on it. The materials, what is it, is it a cast, the welcome, what is that made of?
Aluminum.
It's a cast aluminum.
Welded.
No, it's good and good. The only question I have, and I don't know how I feel about it, I see it's just about the orange, because I, but that's, that's an aesthetic, is there a reason behind that?
Behind what?
The color, the burnt orange.
Oh, warm.
Yeah.
Just to give it, so to bring it.
Welcome.
Welcome. It's a warm tone, it sort of picks up, it's kind of a traditional fall, Native American. I think we wanted to sort of follow the history of the Native American culture in town, and I think we always sort of think of those fall warm colors with that. And I don't think, you know, in some of the things, it doesn't look quite as orange, it's got a, like a burnt...
Well, the, yeah, the actual pigment is a little different than what you get, you know, printed.
Yeah, because of the paper.
Like third generation.
Yeah. But that was the thought, that was the thought behind it, we felt it sort of had that fall, New England.
I really like it, I like the design.
Yeah, I mean, those are my only thoughts. I mean, I understand the part about moving it, that's just sort of how it goes. I just, the only thing I would say is that, like, on that one color myself, and, I don't know, I'm just speaking for Jamie here now, is that it's not too like...
I work beyond that, like, yes.
Yeah, because that's what I mean, because it can get a little like, but, so it's more, I don't know what the right word is.
Subtle?
Yeah, that's it.
If, this gives you some perspective.
Sure.
That's the actual side.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. That does make sense, and I'm sure the iron will be good. Well, that's great, what are you, are you looking for anything from us specifically, or?
Yeah, so the support to move forward with this design. I did show it unofficially to the Marys, but they were here last Monday because I knew, I felt kind of unfair not having them see it.
Sure, sure, sure.
They appeared, both appeared, Mary Dow, I, Mayor Blanchard, I think, came into my office, Mary Dowling did come in, and so Mary did say that she liked this, so.
No, I think it all makes sense.
I couldn't back it up until they were here, because we need to get this moving. We may be able to have this, we might actually be able to start this this fall.
I've talked to everyone on the team about the idea that you might want it for the holidays, so, and everyone's on board with that idea.
Yeah, no, I think it makes sense, I mean, other...
By the holidays, I mean.
Those holidays, not Halloween, yeah, not Halloween, we're just talking about Halloween, that's why the orange is black.
That's why the orange is red. Well, of course.
Can I just, one, that island that you're kind of going, is in that general area, we just would like to make sure that it's not...
Look where you're predicting.
Yeah, well, we can't put it over there, because we have to, we have to dig that line out.
If we have, yeah, if we have to, if we have to move it a couple feet forward or back.
But really, that inspection should happen.
Yeah, that would all happen.
Cross the line anyways, just to make sure we're not blocking any.
No parking is not happening.
Yeah, yeah.
The water, I think the sewers further down, I think it'll be okay, we'll double-check.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
Knowing exactly where it is.
Yep.
Okay, do you want to vote on it, or do you need?
I think a vote would be good, since you guys have all been so behind this, I think it would be.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the Sturbridge Gateway Sign Project.
Second up.
All those in favor? All right, the ayes have it.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
We'll be in touch. Jean.
I really like it.
Do you need anything else from me in the short term? Do you need anything else from me in the short term before, you can keep rolling then? Thank you so much.
All right.
Okay, yeah. We'll have you next.
All right, so we are next on to, we are in Water and Sewer. Shane, how you doing? Same little malarkey, brother.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe.
Here are the operation reports for both August and September, pretty much going to see the same stuff. By the last time I was here, we were having CBOD issues with the plant, we were violating in July and August. We didn't have any violations in September. I haven't seen the official report from our technical group yet, but I think when we take that much septicage, we're going to have to run three tanks during the summer. I think once we do that, we won't have these issues anymore. I need to see that final report. So the good news is we're not violating, violating, and we think we know why we were violating. The only struggle we're going to have is we're going to have to take tanks offline to recode them, so you have to recode them when it's over 55 degrees, so it'll be a balancing act, septicage versus how many tanks are online. But we can control that, and we're working on it. So the good news is, I'm 90% sure we know what was causing the problem, we're not violating anymore, so that's good. We've been flushing and winterizing hydrants, will be done by the end of the week, so everything will be flushed. The winterizing of the hydrants will probably be finished by the end of next week. Heather and I had a conference call with Fish and Wildlife, Mass. Fish and Wildlife and Mass. DOP about the well four stream monitoring that we've been doing for the last three years. Our goal, at least my goal, and I think Heather's too, was to get rid of the stream limit altogether. We didn't achieve that. We do get to run the plant more often when we start getting in drought conditions, but then when we hit, I forget if it's stage three or stage four, we can't run the well at all. So it's a win for us, it's not exactly what we wanted, and we could have just kept going back and forth, we don't have to do any more monitoring, we're already $50,000 in, right? So we have the other three wells, so I think, I think we made out pretty good, I think both Heather and I are pretty happy with the way it turned out, so that's good. The water bills went out, so people should be receiving those, and, you know, tonight's not the night to bring up the E1 stuff, but Heather and I are working on a list of projects. We met with the engineer to come up with, that's what you asked us to do, to come up with what was coming down the line. So we met with them just last week, so hopefully in the upcoming months, we'll be able to put some numbers on all the projects that we see coming up in the near future, and that way you guys can make a better decision on what you want to do with the E1 pumps. Besides that, that's all I have, is any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Question?
I have, I have nothing, everything's going good right now.
Yeah. Are the wells just as full as ever?
Chuck full.
Plenty of water.
Plenty of water, that's not, that's not a problem.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good place to be.
Last year, we were putting out wildfires, half the state was burning. Today, this year, we're under water.
Yeah, no, I've never seen the water table this high, so, yeah, we've got plenty of water, that's not a problem.
That's good. All right, I have nothing, rather than unless you guys have.
I have nothing.
Thanks, Shane.
Okay, thanks. Have a good night.
Thanks, Shane.
The only thing else I have to add, I'm going to start with my water and go on from there, how about that? So in addition to water bills going out, we actually identified a list of some very low-flow meters that we're going to send, we sent letters out to residents asking them to call the water department so we can get in and inspect their meter. These are meters that, over a 90-day period, over the last couple water bill cycles, they haven't been reading, either haven't been reading at all or been reading very, very low, so we're suspecting that there might be some issue there. So we've asked them to contact us so that we can go in there. So if somebody does get a letter from us, it is real, we're asking so that we could get in there to check their meters.
When we, when people sell a house or anything like that, does, do we look at their meters?
So we don't physically look at their meters, we're able to read them externally most of the time because we have the meter remote reader software. So we use our handheld crumble device to do a reading. They program in the number, it's just like when they read the meters.
So you can basically do it remotely, and within a certain percentage of error, you know that it's close enough to where it ought to be?
Right.
Okay.
So they ask us to read it on a certain day. We go out and read it on that day and people have their closing usually within one or two days and they know that the usage is right. And there are times when people don't, you know, when they sell a house without a water meter reading and we go through the sales list and we update people's names that way too. But then they're responsible. You don't have us come read your meter, then you're responsible for any of the, as soon as it sells, you're responsible for that previous usage.
Better not have a leak in the sprinkler line.
That's right. You don't want those. In addition to that, I know there is one contract, no, that's in my, well, so there's one contract on for Route 20 sewer lining for Ty and Bond to do the engineering for that. You remember last year we found a section that was in tremendously bad repair. Well, the rest of the line is not that great, so we want to go ahead and go ahead and line the rest of the lines. We need to get that out to bid and hopefully we will be able to go out to bid and do that work early in the spring and get that.
Yeah, I, I mean, I recalled that. I did have a question though. So when you do that work, because when I read the report from Ty and Bond, so you go to the pump station right near Yankee, is that where it goes in?
Yep.
Okay.
That's where we're going to, yep.
Going to?
Yep.
And where's it start? So where do you run the line from, I guess, is what I'm asked.
So they go manhole to manhole.
Okay.
So we did the manhole that was the most critical one, that basically crossed both lines, both at the intersection of 131 and crossed right there in 20. That was the section that we did last year. This time we are going upstream from that manhole to New Boston Road. So there'll be one section there from the manholes in New Boston Road down and then where we did, and then from the manhole that we ended on to the one on Route 20 into the pump station. So it's a much bigger project. We did one segment. We're doing, did know at one prime, I think there's eight or nine manholes in that whole area. So it's segment, segment.
So basically what you're doing is you're running it, you're running the line, you're stringing the line down by each manhole and then by the get to the end, it all, you seal it and.
Right. So it stops at the manholes. We're actually going to put in the bid also to coat the manholes, which is something we didn't do last time, but it actually is protection on the manhole. So one of the things, and Shane might would have been able to talk to this, it's when you have a pump system like we do with the E1 pumps, this, we take waste from around Cedar Lake into this line. So you build up hydrogen sulfide because it's been sitting in that line for such a long time, which means your waste is even more corrosive than just normal sewage. It's highly corrosive. So it's eating away at all the concrete. Hydrogen sulfide loves the concrete, it's eating away at the concrete.
It's because you're taking it off lake water effectively, so it's a high bacteria.
Well, you're taking it off of that pump system. So whenever you have a pump system, as what you have, it goes from being an aerated waste to a waste that had mixed that in your septic tank and it goes septic, which causes more hydrogen sulfide.
Yeah, because there's not, no air release for it basically, so it dissolved.
It's all good. And then it comes, it gets released at the manhole and goes into gravity and that's when all the sulfide starts.
Why does the concrete, and this is how I'm going down the whole road, but why, why does the concrete have, now Mary Dowling's not here, I'm going to ask questions. I love Mary.
Don't get too technical on that. A lot of times since I did my chemistry and I.
History, I feel.
It's bad. I used to know the answers to these questions, but.
And just to be clear, I love Mary. But the, but why does the, but it's asbestos in the concrete? Why, why, why would that be? Is that the deal of the heat from the drink?
So it, well, asbestos concrete pipe is just more, ends up corroding much quicker anyways.
Yeah.
The concept of using asbestos in pipe was something they thought they are getting this really great product and really as it turns out, it's not the be all end all that they thought it was going to be.
I've heard it, it didn't work out.
So it didn't really work out how they expected. So they thought they were doing something to make the concrete stronger and less and more resistant and it really didn't work out that way in the long run. So it's one of those things that in hindsight's 2020, nobody would have used asbestos anywhere, right? But at the time, they were using it in everything and it was the best product around. We had it everywhere. Now we know better, right?
Okay, that was, I was just curious.
So you, you have that contract coming up, another water and sewer, I'm just going to go through my little list and then we'll go back to the guys. So we have another water and sewer project out to bid right now. That is the painting of, painting and repair of clarifier number, I know the number, I think it's one. We've had one of the clarifiers offline, he's been included to that. It needs to be re-coated. It had a failed baffle wall, which is one of the reasons that the other ones don't have this. It buckles at one point, so we need to have that structural steel beefed up and then they'll probably come back in the spring, actually early spring and painting. At this point, it's too late. But this would give us the ability, if we beef up that wall before winter, if we need to turn it on, we have the ability, even if we had to clean it. So, and then we'll have the specifications ready to go to the other tanks that also needed to be coated. This is periodic regular maintenance, but it's something that we're at to the point now that we need to do at our waste treatment plant. So you'll see that as an ongoing capital cost to treat all of our, one or two at a time. So that was that. What else have I been doing? So our MS4 permit, year five, has just been submitted. It goes from June to July, but you don't have to submit it until August, end of August. That's the end of, yes, it is. I'm like, when did I do submit that? It's in the middle of September.
Yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
So that was just submitted and it will be, you'll be able to see it eventually on the EPA's website. I can put some of the information, actually the information go up on our website too. We're going to bolster our, our stormwater website a little bit more to try to get the information out there and I would encourage people to go there and look at some of the information. Now with it being time in the fall, we are actually supposed to buy permit within the MS4 area. Now the whole, all whole town is not what is considered an MS4 area. It's basically south of the Pike, between the Pike and Route 20 and certain areas near around 131. So if you think of where the most populated parts of the town are, that is what's considered our MS4 area. We will be sweeping. We actually were out sweeping today up on Fisk Hill area and will be continued to sweep in the MS4 area. We're required by permit to have additional enhanced sweeping activities, not just once a year. So once a year, we will, in the spring, sweep all of our paved roads, non-state paved roads and town accepted roads. And then in the fall, we will be sweeping the MS4 areas to be in compliance with our permit. Thing we haven't been doing in the past. In addition, we will be enhancing also our catch basin cleaning, so you'll probably see our catch basin truck out again for as long as it will last. Know that the catch basin truck is one of the trucks that we're replacing with capital money, but of course those trucks, buddy, you know, we'll be lucky if we see it in the next six months. So maybe next spring we'll have our new catch basin truck, which would be lovely, but we'll be going out and making the old one last as long as we can and cleaning as many more catch basins as we can this fall, which is a little bit of a enhanced stormwater that we're doing. And the reason we're doing that is in this area, the rivers and lakes indicate they have higher sedimentation and higher sibidities. So because of that, they ask us to sweep more frequently to try to combat that, to clean up the rivers and lakes and the sibidity level. So there's a direct correlation of why we have to do it, so, just so people understand. In addition, people will be cleaning up their lawns and raking their leaves. I ask people to really be considerate of not putting them into the drainage dishes. It does two things. It actually increases the pollution of your lakes and your rivers and your stream by increasing the phosphorus and it's really not very healthy for your ecosystem, your lake ecosystem, and it clogs the drains and causes flooding concerns. So don't put them in the drainage dishes. That's not where they belong. Composting is a really good method of treating your leaves and if you can't do them on your own property, you can bring the leaves down to the landfill. There is an area for compost, for leaves down there to be composted. So there are options for people, so please be aware of that. What else? I do want to just go a little bit more on winter and private roads. So I'm going to say, help us help you. If you live on a private road, please trim your bushes and your limbs back eight feet in the air, two feet off the pavement. We are really having difficult times getting down some of these roads now with our big plows and we have to get down there with the big plows if we're going to salt and treat the roads. So we, and if, if you trim them back, we'll be able to service you quicker and service everyone quicker and not damage our equipment because that's some of the things that happens. We're, mirrors get ripped off, things of that nature, or we just can't get down the road at all. So by trimming those bushes back in the fall, it's going to allow us to get down the road much more effectively and efficiently. So.
You send out letters to the residents on those roads?
I don't because that's a lot of residents. So I will do a posting and we'll do a posting on Facebook and ask people to do it, but I don't, I'm not sure if historically in the past, I know not in the like last four years that hasn't, a big mailing like that would be probably pretty costly also.
But what about the Slack groups?
We can, we could maybe reach out to Slack and ask them to post it.
Yeah, because they might.
And put it, like, just putting it out on the website and Facebook. Facebook reaches a lot of people nowadays too, so hopefully maybe they'll see it. But just doing that for us would really improve our efficiency and, and we really don't want to damage the equipment and we want to get around as quickly as possible and make sure that we do a good job plowing, but can't plow very close to the edge if the branches are hitting the truck going down the road.
Yes.
But that, the FY '24 paving bids did come in and we actually did very competitively well. We are very pleased. About $400,000 less than what we had estimated, which is great, which means we can do more roads, you know, we can put more out to bid in the spring and do more, so.
Competitive, a lot of, what, six, six to seven?
Six, six, I think. Bids, so yeah. And they, there, we had two other bids that were below what we had estimated. We were right there in the middle, so which is good where we want to be. But yes, it was very competitive and people were looking for it. We're still working with them. They were hopeful that maybe they could do some roads this fall. Temperatures are starting to dip really quickly, but you never know. I know we've had rebounds, so we don't have anything scheduled yet, but they were still hopeful that they would be able to do that. And Fisk Hill Parking Lot, I talked about the other bid that was coming in Thursday. Fisk Hill Parking Lot for the Trails Committee was also out to bid and those bids are also due on Thursday, so hopefully we'll get prices in for them. That is a project that can be done late fall into the winter, which is great. Somebody might have a nice little couple week project for them to clear and get that all settled. So you should be seeing that coming into you next, Thursday.
Thursday.
Yeah. And I think, I think that's basically what I have. The other thing that this week I'm working with Annie on the fencing at Turner's Field to get that out to bid. And I have another asphalt patching, smaller patches, road patches, curbing that will be going out to bid and we're helping with the tree warden on getting a package out for pre-removal bids for prices for that. So we're still busy putting bids together, which is a little time consuming at times, so making sure we have it all, so.
There's a lot going on, actually.
Yeah, there's still a lot going on. In addition, I will say that the DP, oh, talking about snow. So in addition, snow contractor packages are out there, so if anybody is interested in plowing for the town who has a truck themselves, that bid is, that package is out on the town website. And if you're interested in being a hired driver for the town, that is, those applications are also available on the town website. If you have any problems, you can call the DPW. April is willing to send the package out via email, but it's all available too. So we are looking for contractors. We have some of our existing contractors coming back, but now is the time we're looking for our snowplow contractors and hired drivers. So anybody interested, feel free to contact the DPW. So, start. In addition, DPW still has three positions open, so one of them is posted on the website. The other two, we will be, we will be putting job postings up, but it's going to probably be that we're going to have to start looking based on what, not what the position is, but who, what people have for licenses and have for experience and hire based on that in our, in our levels, whether they're entry level or have some experience as a license operator and has the degrees. So we have some flexibility there. If they have the right licenses, then great, we can hire them as a heavy equipment operator. But we have certain requirements that they need CDLs, so CDL drivers and people with hydraulics licenses. We definitely have positions open, looking for them. In addition, we do have a position for an assistant mechanic, anybody who has mechanic experience for big trucks and we have that position, it's open and posted. Okay? But we really are in need because we're very shorthanded. As far as, I know you had two months of reports. Anybody have any questions? I think as you can see, we're kind of going around. It's been one of those summers, I've never seen it rain this much. We seem like we're, every week we're fixing some type of drainage problem. We are still fixing a drainage problem. We're trying to actually combat a problem up on Acorn that has existed since it was constructed with some ice, so that's what we've been working on this week, which isn't really in this report. But you can see it's been lots of private road drainage, lots of fixing potholes, lots of fixing just regular drainage problems.
Trimming green areavic wouldn't stop growing.
We're still out constantly doing roadside mowing. We've had issues with our mowers this year going down, but we've also just had growth that's under, that's just out of control, so.
Thank you for doing Allen Road finally.
You're trying to get everywhere. It is, we are trying to get everywhere. You know, if you think you've been missed, feel free to call us and we'll make sure we get somebody out there, but.
It'll die soon anyway.
We are still out there trimming, so.
That's great. I don't have anything else to question.
I have two quick questions. The first, the parking lot over across from.
Yep, 501 Main Street.
Is that going to get paved this fall?
Hopefully if we get our DOT permit for our.
Is that what's holding it up?
Yeah.
They're going to install granite curbing and then they're going to pave, so it's probably not going to be this.
So we're still somewhat hopeful. We're still within a window depending on temperature and he's been really good. I know that they just cashed the check.
Well, that's good.
Yep, so we're moving forward. So I, I sent a little message on my system that I, and they did cash it, so I'm hopeful that they can move it along relatively quickly now because it really shouldn't be anything. Moving things through Mass DOT has been very interesting of late. Things that I can't even understand why it takes them more than 10 minutes to that, it's going to take them months.[1642.33] 10 minutes to look at, it's going to take them months. Very, it's a very interesting process. They've automated their process so that it's very 25%, 50%, like there's all these review stuff. And just to get into the queue of the review is weeks, iraqous.
Yeah. And you mentioned sweeping. Did we get our new sweeper?
No, we're, that's also on order, yes. You know, the, the only thing we were lucky enough in July to get right away, because we were able to buy it basically off the lot, was the loader landfill. Everything else we're still waiting on. I can't even put in an order for a Ford Explorer. They won't even let me take it into the system, so. We've been talking internally, and again, it's putting a bid together, because if I order off the state bid list, I have to go through certain channels. And the reason why I say a Ford Explorer is, it's the only vehicle that has any weight, that four-wheel drive, that is, also meets the Green Communities requirement. So it's like one model that I can buy, so, you know, I can't get a Chevy Tahoe because it doesn't meet Green. So, there's like a lot of moving parts, but is actually putting a bid together and going out to the local field or dealers and saying, do you have one of these that we can buy?
No, no further questions from me.
Thank you.
No, I don't have anything. I think we can, what else do you have on here? You have the item D.
Yeah, I have, I have, yes, I feel like half of the agenda's mine, right?
I don't think we're going to have questions on F and G.
Yeah, those are the two trail.
Those are the two trails. Those are just execution, that's all.
Yep, those went out to multiple engineering firms. We had two submissions on both of them. Three of us reviewed all the, because they were basically technical applications and then hourly separate. And although all the engineering firms were very qualified and had great proposals, when we looked at it for the cost and what it was, tie and bond was cheaper on both of them. So, you know, if everybody was qualified and had good, why wouldn't we discover the cheapest?
Yep, makes sense. And then I think you pretty well discussed the.
What D is, is the, yeah, engineering for Route 20 lining in the manhole project.
Do you guys have any questions for any of those?
No.
All right, I'm going to do, I'm going to make a motion to, well, authorize the chair to execute the contract with tie and bond for engineering services on Route 20 for sewer replacement in amount of $58,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The eyes have it. I'm going to make a motion to authorize the chair to execute a contract with tie and bond for 469A Main Street Trail and Bridge Project in the amount of $233,500. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Guys have it. I'm going to make a motion to authorize the chair to execute a contract with tie and bond for the Grand Tron Trail continuation over property number one and number nine and River Road in the amount of $67,700. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thanks, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Have a great night. Okay. All right, then we're on to action item A, consideration and possible action on an application for a Hockern Pedaler license for Ahmad Hussein Karim, how do I say the last name?
Kamchay.
Kamchay. Yeah, you know what I'm up, for Trinity Solar.
So, Trinity Solar had come in last year and had a license to go door to door, and I think the only restrictions the board put on were dawn to dusk, and at the time, I think wearing a mask going to people's doors was in that restriction, because we were still sort of the tail end of COVID. That license expired the end of September, I believe, so they came back to us to reapply.
Okay. And what were, is the hour restrictions on this one?
I think we had dawn to dusk originally. We left it sort of open based on some like.
Did you do just seven?
Did you do seven to seven?
Yeah, I thought, I thought seven.
Was it seven?
It was out of my head.
Yeah, I was something like, I don't think it was, because it wouldn't really dusk would be a little.
Maybe so, maybe it was dawn to seven. I know, I know dawn was in there, so you can't go before the sunrise.
Yeah, definitely not. It makes sense.
Yeah, no, so our operation usually starts from like, right now, is at 1:30 to 7:30, but over the years, since it gets darker quicker, we actually leave the field earlier. They don't, they don't want us to knock in the dark. I wish, I didn't know this was like this. We have lanyards that have actually lights around them, so when we walk on doors that have lights all over our neck, we look like Christmas trees.
That's a good idea.
So it's all this coming up.
Definitely not robbing anybody wearing that.
And then we walk out with our flashlights, our phone is out, 24/7, so they have a front light for us to see our face and a back light to see our feet. We usually step back from the doors at night especially, so we are really careful at night, because a lot of towns are not steady. They're towns, a lot of people are not used to getting knocked at 7 o'clock at night.
Yeah.
Who's at my door? So we try to like, work for everybody. Me personally, I try not, not knock at night. I call it burning doors, because you just leave a bad thing. That's all. You know, 7 o'clock, you're coming home, want to sleep, you want to watch the TV. You don't, you don't want to knock.
Family time.
So, I just try to, you know, look at myself, I was like, what if I'm in that situation?
So, I mean, what do you want to do?
I, I'm, I think seven's fair. I, I'd probably not from a, you know, because we're not in a big upswing of COVID, I'd remove the mask, just because when someone comes on my door, I'd like to see the face, so.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Although I have one with you, just in case.
For sure.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
We do, we do keep our six feet. All owners are not feeling comfortable with it. We definitely respect them. We work for integrity. That's our company motto, and we try the best to keep them comfortable.
Of course, yeah.
And, you know, it's their property.
And we didn't have any issues last year with any of this?
We got no complaints, and no.
All right, great. Well, I will make a motion to approve the application for a Hockern Pedaler license for Ahmad Hussein Karim Shahi. Karim Shahi, I'm sorry. For Trinity Solar from dawn to 7:00 PM.
Appreciate that.
Second.
Thank you.
I was like, but either or.
We both second.
Calm down, calm down, calm down. It is very exciting about the solar projects.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Have a great night, my friend.
If you want to wait, I'll have, stick around, we'll have them sign it right now since you're here.
I mean, yeah, they can, you can wait and actually walk away with it.
Oh, I love that, that's great.
Yeah, customer service and a dress.
I can do it tomorrow.
You don't even have to worry about it, see that? Okay.
Okay. And while they're signing.
He's going to stop pitching it, Nick.
All right, so I'm going to.
That's after seven.
All right, I'm going.
Thank you, I mean, thank you.
Okay, moving on to actions item B and C, which is consideration and possible action on an application for a one-day liquor license from Greater Good Company, JT Ethier, from the town, for the town bonfire and the town common for Saturday, October 28th, 2023, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And we've had no issues with Greater Good, right? So I, I make a, so moved.
Yep.
Yeah, do you have a second, Chase?
Second, yep.
All those in favor? Great. Same thing for our friends at Altruis. I'm going to move to approve their application for a one-day liquor license for Altruis Brewing Company, Shelby Fay, for the town bonfire on the town common for Saturday, Saturday, October 28th, 2023, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. I'm going to make a motion to accept the donation for benches near Veterans Hall, strike that, benches near Veterans Honor Roll Monument in the amount of $719.12. Do I have a second?
Second now.
And all those in favor? And thank you for the, Mr. Brier, as always.
He's a wealth of information.
A wonderful man. I love talking to him.
Yeah, talk to him about spot zoning sometimes, see what he says.
Oh, he's great. What a character.
He's wonderful. All right, so I'm also going to, so Ms. Bowler?
Yep, so Ms. Bowler works for Seven Hills, which does a lot of work with families in need. She is willing to join our Disabilities Commission. I need to have so many people who have disabilities who have family members with disabilities. She has family members with disabilities, and she works in the industry, so I highly recommend board approval for that.
That's great. Do we have a motion?
No move.
Second.
All those in favor? The eyes have it. Mary Lou, any old business?
No.
Chase?
I have no, thank you.
I have no old either. New business either of you?
No.
All right. I'm no new myself.
Just reminded, trick or treating on Halloween to everybody, bring your kids.
That's right, good point. All right, then we're two minutes. How much minutes do we have here? Because we got some additional ones, right?
Yeah, so Michelle had a bunch that she put together for you.
Yeah, I came in this week, I'm pretty nice happy, you need them, Jamie?
What's that?
You have them?
I have them, I'm just trying to make sure I understand which ones I have to look at.
Yeah, she did a couple old ones, right?
Sorry, I'm trying.
Two, in April and in August.
Trying to get them out there.
And then November of '22, so they're sort of all over the place. 423 is in 122.
Okay, I'm looking at September 5th, 20, well, yeah, I'm going to, by顺序 in order, what's the, oh, I'm looking at October 10th, 2023. Does anybody have any comments?
No.
It was last week.
Yeah. All right, do I have a motion to approve the October 23 minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for October 10th, 2023.
Second. All those in favor? The eyes have it. September 5th, 2023.
Okay, on September 5th, on the second page where it says the Mary White Memorial, it just says on the common there will be a, and then there's nothing after it.
Yeah, it should say a birdhouse.
Birdhouse. Oh, birdhouse, sorry.
It's a birdhouse.
Don't really see anything else other than that.
I don't either. Do we have a motion for September 5th?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of September 5th, 2023.
Second.
All those in favor? We cannot approve the November 21st minutes, because I was the only one there.
We not approved this, this November 21st?
21st, 22. On to the April 3rd, 2023. Can't approve this either. I guess we.
Oh, we can.
Yeah, we can, we got two of three. Yeah, you just can't vote, Mary. Ian's baby must be getting big.
Yeah, I'm kidding. It's time, time.
Time flies.
Do you like a motion, sir?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 3rd, 2023 minutes.
I second. And one extension. All right, and then we are on to April 21st, 2023.
August.
August, excuse me. I have no thoughts.
Don't see anything.
I move to approve the August 21st, 2023 minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the August 23rd, 23rd, 2023 minutes.
All right, I will second. All those in favor? All right, great. Hurry with that. Do we, anybody from the public? See anybody? Seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Guys have it.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.